Family definition, you know, there's three aspects to that.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, November 10th, meeting of the Public Works and Finance Committee for the City of Moscow. To my right is Wayne Kraus, to my left is Art Betsy, both city council members, and sitting in the city supervisor chair is Jen Piffner, and I'm Dan Carsgow. First order of business is the approval of the October 27th, 2014 minutes.
Good to me.
Good to me, too, Art, and we don't care what Wayne thinks because he wasn't here.
Nope, doesn't care what I think.
We'll go ahead and pass those. Next up is the, is a couple Dawn Palmer items. First is the completed disbursement report for September 2014. Dawn?
Yes. Every year, this time of the year, we do two reports for September. We did the last one, it was October 13th, and it lacked the accruals. And I said at that point in time, we'd come back and capture the accruals that we paid in October, just to have September invoices to them. So, we've done that, and I'm here to report, and at the last meeting, we reported $2.3 million in expenditures. At this time, it's 3.65 with the accruals. And so, what those include are the following, we had professional services added to it that added another $2,000 for MedStar, a lot of annual software renewals, excuse me, that'll be something in the November report, annual, we had JUB trunk line for $36,000, we had, the city went through and cleared out some fiber lines for $9,000, the ball fields was $465,000, other construction projects were $38,000, the payroll was $439,000, utilities, which include electric was $80,000, and LSI was $170,000. So, all total, that counts for the extra funds.
Extra $1.3.
So, and so I can go back through the previous expenditures, but since we've already done that.
Go ahead, Art.
How often do we pay premiums to ICROM?
Once a year. Well, we can twice a year, but we choose to do it once a year. So, with that, I'll submit the...
Yeah, it's, it's a good annual...
That's substantial.
You got the magic pen?
Yeah, I do. As well.
With that, I can go, while that's getting signed, go through the November one.
Okay, go ahead and move on into the November one.
Okay.
October one.
October one.
There is October.
Yeah. So, because the accruals are paid in October for the month of September, that makes October expenditures, you'd think, a lot less, and in most cases, that's the case. But this, this, we spent $2,339,218 in the month of October, and the reason for that is there's two payrolls for $847,300. Construction projects are much lighter because of the, because of the accruals that were done, $5,608. Professional services is to be mentioned, $397,000, of which, that's where I got mentioned earlier in the wrong month, is that we paid WICOM for their annual, or no, their quarterly payment for $125,000, and then a variety of license renewals from Dell Computer to, for Office, the Springbrook Software, all told, those are $148,000, $147,000 in software renewals.
Those are generally annual.
Annually. And then, P-back was $40,000, and then janitorial supply, or janitorial payment was made, UFI annual street maintenance for $40,000 was also paid, AIC membership was also an annual payment, and CDA annual also. The sewer bonds, $723,000 is paid, and so, the remaining things, the insurance, $224,406, that's an annual payment for the liability insurance. And so, any questions? That, all, all those categories represent 95.5% of the $2.3 million, or $2,234,575 for the month.
Any questions?
Pretty standardized to me, it's all pretty routine, routine stuff.
We didn't keep your pens, so, just like waiting around. All right, we'll get that signed, and thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
Next up is our, one of our favorite topics, single stream curbside recycling, and it's the service request for proposals, and Tim Davis is going to present that.
A bunch of blue sheets underneath there.
Good afternoon, Tim.
Good afternoon. At the last Public Works Finance Committee meeting, staff was directed to prepare a draft RFP before we went before full council for consideration of the single stream recycling program. You have that RFP before you, it's pretty basic and straight to the point. We give some descriptions of minimum specifications for the carts to be used, minimum specifications for the 20-yard roll-off containers for the glass collection, and then we go on and break out the costs at the end, that will be required in LSI's response. Unless there's any questions.
Oh, there's questions.
I have a couple go-rounds, out talking with people in the community, and they expressed some concerns about having a 95-gallon container as the only option for them, because some people said that they weren't too big and able to tote the thing around too well, despite the fact that it's mostly bulky stuff. Other people said, no room in the garage already, and so, there's some concerns about that, and I'm wondering whether we should include a separate bid in the RFP that includes some options for, not a 95, but slightly downsized, and as an extension of that, some other folks were concerned about using 95-gallon bins at the apartment complexes, and thinking that is an invitation to major problems, and whether we might be better off using a dumpster-sized bin instead with that, including that in the bin, realizing that every one of these tweaks is going to probably elevate the cost, but...
Absolutely.
In terms of utility and functionality of the system, whether or not it might be better to incorporate those aspects.
Well, when I developed the program and decided to go on the bi-weekly, going with the 95-gallon cart would give people the space to, most people, and it's not going to, it's not a one-size-fits-all by any means, same, same deal when we did it with garbage. But, when we're going bi-weekly, I wanted to give people enough capacity to handle all that material. We're not talking about garbage in these totes, we're talking about recyclables, and a 95-gallon tote is not that hard to move around. With regards to the apartments, they use 35-gallon totes over in Pullman at some of the apartment complexes, and it just means that you have to have that many more of them out there.
Well, I think the, the thing I remember us talking about a couple weeks ago was having the, like, a more of a centralized, whether it be a dumpster or something like that, at the apartment complexes, you know, away from the, the garbage dumpster, but someplace that, you know, that was more centralized, so you didn't have a bunch of 96ers running around.
Our intent is not to put a 95-gallon unit at each individual complex within an apartment unit, we would have a designated area. The problem we run into if we go to a dumpster for recycling, it becomes very hard to bill.
Yeah.
If we go with one size, everybody pays the same price across the board, and everybody gets access to the same service. And it's exactly what you said, if we start putting in different-sized carts for, for him and her and Joe, pretty soon, then we end up swapping those when people move out, and you're looking at the cost going up. That will definitely happen.
I guess for the, for folks' reference, Pullman uses one size for their recycling.
Pullman uses different sizes.
They do use different sizes for their recycling?
Most of the residential's are using 95s, but I, I travel over the airport road and up over campus, and I do see a lot of 35s up at the apartment complexes, and I think that may be for parking constraints, you know, or space, I'm not sure why that is.
I think that was part of the thing, you know, that we were also talking about for not having so many of the, because when we, when we do an apartment complex now for garbage, we don't have separate garbage, we have, you know, one...
Dumpster.
Dumpster, that's why.
Most cases, we do, yeah.
I was hoping that we could do the same with, with the recycling, you know, if there's a way, you know, like Art says, maybe there's, we just put in an add option, add alternate or something like that in the RFP to, just so we've got it.
It's absolutely an option that council can consider.
Yeah, at least that way, we, we know, we don't have to wait till later to figure something like that out, you know, and it's there. Go ahead, Dawn.
Several years ago, it's been quite a few, we did a pilot program with recycling up at the University of Idaho, with Charles Zillinger in control of that, and when we did that, what they found was there was a lot of contamination in the roll carts. They went through and they put those out there...
In the dumpsters.
In dumpsters, I mean, and, and they had a little patrol group of guys through their sustainability department that came around and tried to help maintain it. I think that program went on for about six months, seemed like, and it, it didn't work too well. That's why this roll cart thing might be a better option, but that was one of the venues...
That's another thing I forgot to mention on the apartments, is especially where apartments have never had curbside access before, and this is new, and it tends to be, you know, I don't want to categorize folks, but most of the apartments are college-age folks, you know, going to school and whatnot, that's where we're going to see our contamination. And when we see contamination, if, if you have a full dumpster of contaminated material, it's all contaminated, where if it's just a 95-gallon cart, you can deal with that a little easier, and that was part of the reasoning as well.
Wayne?
You brought up one of the points that I was thinking about, was how, if you have dumpsters, how do you keep contamination? How do you keep it from becoming just a dumpster with garbage in it also? And I think you spoke to it well, I think that would be an issue. Then, of course, the other issue, too, is multiple-sized containers does increase the cost on it. But then, one other thing that would be an issue, I think, by going to dumpsters, is the truck that they're going to be utilizing is going to be designed to dump garbage totes.
Exactly.
And to dump a container, you've got to have a completely different truck for that purpose. So, here again, I think you would either have to be a, a truck that was modified specifically for the use of recycling, or they'd have to buy another truck, so, either way, the cost goes up.
And I guess, too, maybe we could look at, perhaps, going with their expertise as far as what they, you know, they, they've been doing this elsewhere.
Yep.
I know that they've sold off some of the other places, but they, they do do it elsewhere, and, you know, have them, maybe if they can get a little creative on some of their stuff, that, that wouldn't hurt my feelings either, to see, you know, you know, yeah, this is what we're, this is what we're requesting, but if you've got something that we're not thinking of, and I know you probably get a good back-and-forth with them, so, so if there's something that we're not thinking of, that, that they are, you know, that, that wouldn't hurt my feelings. But, I know Tim thinks a lot, because he's been doing this forever, so. Go ahead, Tom, come on up.
Tom Lamar, Moscow City Council. I, as I spoke before, a few weeks ago, I'm a big advocate for having choices on size for the containers. I do understand that it increases the cost, but I think it also increases the functionality of the system. I, for one, don't have room in my garage for a 95-gallon tote, and if, so, this system would work for me if I didn't have to use that tote, and could just use my garbage tote as a double, and put it out with a sign on it that says recycle on those off weeks. But, I don't think that we want to try to train the drivers to look for those signs. So, my very strong preference is that we have the 35-gallon option for folks like me, I think there are a lot of us, who just don't generate that much trash, whether it's garbage or recycling. I, I put recycling out once every other week right now, and I am hard-pressed to fill one of those green totes, those green buckets. I, I just don't have that much, and especially if I'm not putting glass in it, I just won't be able to fill up, I won't even fill up a 35-gallon thing, so, I just think it's important.
Wayne?
Well, you see where Tom's coming from, as far as Gail and I, we recycle everything we can, and every other week, we put out our recycling. Well, I think she's doing it every week now, just because they asked us to do that. But, there's no way we're going to, even with all our recycling, especially without glass, we're going to fill a 95-gallon container. Yeah, I've got a place I can put it, but I really don't want to have something that big myself. So, what I would like to see would be some cost estimates either way. How much more is it going to have, how much more is it going to cost to have multiple choices, as well as what's it cost if we have $1.95, that's it, this is what it's going to cost, or if we have options like, like Tom's talking about? So, I'd like to see that, that option.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. A couple other things, we got in here that we want a 60-to-90-day signup period. Does that seem a little long? I mean, 60 days seems like it might be enough.
I had a 60-day signup period when we started the roll-off collection for garbage, and I continued to receive those signup sheets, and I still continue to receive those signup sheets, so it's like, I think we can probably knock out most of them in 60 days. But, we want to give people the opportunity and be able to get some promotional words out to folks on the radio and the news, newspaper and so forth, you know, to let them know what's going on, because this is going to be new to everybody, and I want to make sure we give them the time and we, we do this right.
And then the other thing, we talk about having the, the recycle emblem on them in lieu of the serial numbers?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not necessarily tracking the recycling like we do the garbage?
We won't be tracking the carts, so to speak, if we go with one size. Now, that may change if we go with a different size, because there will be some swapping going on, there will be some extra inventory that will need to be bought because of that. I guess my idea behind that is I want to make sure that these things are marked recycling only, a completely different color, the whole nine yards, so there's no mistake.
And I, I guess my other question was, if, if my cart disappears, you know, how do they find it? And I guess they'll just bring me another cart, I suppose, but, but that was, that was my only thing. But, we're not really worried about, you know, other than, like you say, if we do the two sizes, I don't even know if we're worried about tracking so much, other than...
We can still track activity, we won't necessarily have to tie it to a specific account, but, you know, we'll be able to tell how many pickups there are in a day, and how many people are participating. If we're using different sizes, that may change that a little bit.
Yeah, I guess then, up here, and, and there's four of us, maybe throw that in as an add alternate, the different sizes. I can understand, I'm still worried about a lot of, a lot of totes at, at an apartment complex, but, you know...
I think I'm a little bit swayed by the arguments you put forth there, especially about the contamination issue. And so, I figure, well, you know, if it doesn't work out, we can think about a fix later on, but for that, I figure go with the totes at the apartments.
Some kind of tote corral or something out there to fit recycling. You have something, come on up.
I just, I'm glad that you're asking these questions, and, and despite, no matter what you do, I would like to see what the options are, what the numbers are, and one of the things, and, you know, maybe it'll, you don't have to go 95, 35, maybe you want to go 65, 95, you know, I mean, I could live with a 65 a lot better than I could live with a 95. And the other thing, looking ahead, because you guys talk about it, you know, maybe doing yard waste sometime, or doing something else.
That's the next thing we're going to go on.
Yeah, and I don't want four totes, and I don't want to pay for, I, I won't take a kitchen one, it'd take me a year to fill that thing up, you know, but, you know, you're talking, you're talking, now where am I going to put a third one? Now where am I going to put a fourth one? You know, I mean, it piles, so...
Yeah, there, yeah, I can understand, and, and that one may be something, you know, in my mind, I see that as more of an option and not everybody having one, you know, if we, if we hold the yard waste.
Voluntary type program.
Yeah, absolutely. And it, you would be billed as they get picked up, that would be another one you would have to track, I would suppose, so, yeah.
It would take me a year to fill up a 95 kitchen waste one, you know, it would never happen.
Hold out once a year, might get a little smelly.
Yeah, so, anyway, I appreciate that you're, at least get some numbers for us, you know, some options.
Not promising anything, but we'll look at the numbers.
Yeah, that's...
Thank you. Okay, so, I guess now, do you think you could have those additions for council next week?
Yes.
And then we just go from there, that way, we're not, we're not pushing this back a whole 'nother week as far as, you know, committee.
I'll put, I'll, I'll alter that option in the RFP to include, how many different sizes would you like me to include?
I would only have two different sizes, I think.
65, 95?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I, I know Tom wants his 35, but, will, will...
I'd be okay with 65 and 95, because recycling is just so bulky...
Yeah.
...that you've got to have some space.
Not everybody's as, as green as Tom around here, so...
And was there a concern with the serial numbers? Would you rather see serial numbers rather than the recycled insignia?
Well, I think you've got to have the, the symbol, and I...
We could probably...
If you're not concerned about the serial numbers, I'm not concerned.
You figure that out.
If, if you're not concerned, and they're not concerned, I'm not concerned. I was just wondering if there was, if there's no tracking, that really doesn't make a difference as far as, as anything there, what was the other?
I think, leave that up to your expertise.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Is that the only other serial numbers, the apartments, we kind of...
Beat up.
You beat us up on that one. We acquiesced to your...
Good sense.
The good sense of the professionals. And I think that, I think that was, and then the, I think a 90-day signup period's probably going to work, too.
60?
60, 60 will probably work, but, you know, if, if, if we need 90, I mean, like you said, he's still getting signups now, so, we'll, we'll get that.
If this is adopted, we're going to hit the ground running.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm not going to be delaying things.
No, absolutely not, we'll, we'll get it going. Go ahead, Tom.
Still, Tom, I, I still would like to see the 35, but on a corollary to the size thing, I, I do think that we are going to need to be somewhat flexible when, when people start using these totes, and they start swapping them out, and start realizing that, hey, I can actually reduce my waste, and I want, now I want to switch to 35 on my waste, so...
That's where the other switches, I think, are going to start happening.
And this is why, this is why I believe strongly in the 35 thing, too, for the recycling, is that people are going to be moving things around, and, and I think the more flexible we can be with the residents, the better, the more successful the project's going to be, so, that's what I'd like to see, especially when we get into yard waste and kitchen waste or whatever other steps we have, so...
No, it might be one of those things where you're pulling together the quotes, column A, column B, column C, with 95, 95, 65...
And then the three-toed ones.
Yep.
Yeah, or maybe, maybe we, you know, we can, people can special order the 35, and they don't have to...
The other problem with putting the, the multiple sizes in an RFP is we don't have a good idea of how many of each we're going to get, so, I mean, we can, that's the difficulty.
What if it's the number, same, you know, us...
That's a, I guess that's a starting place, is where we're, where we're sitting with, but I would, I'm almost thinking, I know I would use a 95 because of the bulk, you know...
I think the actual, the actual cost of the carts themselves may be less if we're using smaller containers, but, on the other hand, we're going to have to have that much more inventory, because some folks are going to say, well, I'd like a 35, and they may find that that doesn't work for them, or vice versa.
And then you've got inventory costs and...
Inventory kills you, because, especially when you have to have enough carts to take care of folks.
And it may come down to when, you know, when it comes in, you know, that that's just going to say, well, we're, we're looking at such a, a cost increase with doing this, it may totally change, make us not do that, just because of the cost, but, you know...
Right, and the numbers may be similar to the waste numbers, the garbage numbers, but not the same people, but similar kind of breakdowns.
Well, I just, I can see this becoming more and more complicated, and the administrative costs going up exponentially, depending upon, I, we're switching stuff out, and we're using different colored carts, we're using diff, all these different options for everybody, and it's like, you know, that's fine, but I don't want to see the costs start climbing clear up to the point where everybody starts complaining that now it costs too much for recycling.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather...
You can always throw the stuff in your trunk and haul it down to the recycling center, so...
Which is what I'll do.
Let's look at the options, but I'm certainly not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support an expensive program.
Right.
And, you know, in all fairness, I, I understand the concerns, but that's my drive, is the cost, and if you put one size out there, you either have one or you don't.
Right.
And there's no switch.
What we want to see, Tim, is we're going to have folks asking us, what if, and why didn't you? And if you bring us the option so that we can see that, then we'll have that explanation as to, well, this is why we didn't do it, because...
Or, this is why we did.
Yep, and this is why we did it this way.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
So, you think you...
Thank you.
Dawn?
Dawn's back.
One of the things, as Tim already mentioned, that we had an advantage when we did the roll carts for MSW, is that we already had an idea of who were signed up for one can, two cans, or three cans.
Yep.
This is going to be a big shot in the dark, I mean, he's going, he's got the expertise to get a good shot at it based on what other entities are doing, but it's going to be a guessing game on trying to do an RFP with the sizing issues, because we don't know what folks have out there, and when you're doing an RFP, we're at a real disadvantage, and I just wanted to highlight that piece, because I don't, I don't think anybody really knows, you know...
Yeah, I don't even think that sanitation knows, because, like you say, it's not something that you necessarily track. Some guy might put out two, two tubs, while one guy puts out one, and he's just got plastic jugs where this guy's got the gamut, so, you know, it, it is a hard thing to track because of the different, different animals, so...
I don't believe we track that through Encore now, do we? Yeah, it's just something, if somebody sets out, it's kind of like the loose garbage thing we had a few years ago, when if we didn't get paid for it, somebody set out three cans, the garbage guy picked them up, and we'd had, you know, we were guessing, but we actually guessed pretty accurately on our estimates, but, but that's a disadvantage, real disadvantage, where we don't have a tool to track the, the recyclables, so...
Well, you, you can get, in a 95-gallon, you can get a lot of recyclables in there if you do it the right way. If you take a one-gallon milk carton container and just throw it in there, that takes up a lot of space, but if you stand on it and flatten it out, all of a sudden, it takes up a whole lot less space, and that's the way it is with all the plastics, and plastics take up, that's a big volume area.
Cardboard is...
Cardboard's the other one, yeah.
Cardboard, too, yeah.
Okay, so, we kind of got a...
I think so.
Direction, and let's put that on regular, and, and we'll, we'll hash it out there, and...
We'll have all these same words all over again, probably from the other council people.
Move it forward. Thanks a lot, Tim, appreciate it.
Thank you, yep.
Lot of hard work going on with that.
Yes.
All right, next up is a, we're going to have a little public meeting here on the 411 North Main Street Lot Division. It's not a public hearing, so, you know, it's not like we're taking serious testimony, but if someone has something to say, we'll go ahead and invite you up and let you speak towards it, so, Bill, go ahead and get us started.
Good afternoon. As you mentioned, this is a lot division request, it's actually kind of a combination lot division and lot line adjustment request for property that's currently addressed as 411 North Main. So, as I mentioned, the proposal does include a lot division of an existing 4.74-acre parcel and a lot line adjustment to an existing 9,360-square-foot parcel of land. The 4.74-acre parcel currently contains the Rozar's Grocery Store and a vacant building, while the 9,000-square-foot parcel is currently vacant. The proposal, as, as... The proposal, as, as presented, would result in the creation of three parcels, one that's eighteen thousand square feet in size, one that's sixteen thousand seven hundred square feet in size, and then the remainder, that would be four-point-one-six acres, uh, in size. Uh, the property in general currently has five different vehicular approaches, three located on Main, uh, US ninety-five, one on E Street, and one on D Street, and there's existing public transit stop and shelter on the E Street frontage as well. Uh, so this is the, the property in question, so the existing, uh, parcel, nine-thousand-square-foot parcel, is here on the corner, it's, it's kinda shaped as a rectangle, but it's longer in the north-south dimensions, really not shown on this map. Uh, the four-point-seven-four acre parcel is then the remaining bulk of the, the Rozar's property. So what's presented on the screen, uh, is the proposed configuration of a lot located here on the northeast corner, as well as one located here on the southeast corner, and then this would become the remnant, uh, parcel there, uh, that houses the Rozar's property. As I mentioned, there are about five different vehicular approaches, one here on the south side on D, uh, one on the north on E, and then there are three located along, uh, the eastern front adjacent to Main, US ninety-five, uh, two that are fairly well-spaced, and then two that are about twenty-five feet, uh, away from each other. Uh, then the public transit stop there is located on the north edge on E, just north of the existing, uh, prior, uh, pet supply store that's currently vacant. Um, you'll see, just briefly, uh, in the recommendations, staff is recommending that we, with increased access, um, from potential future development on these sites, that those two, um, those two, uh, northernmost approaches to ninety-five and Main Street, uh, are requested to be consolidated to a single approach, and the exact location could certainly can be adjusted, but that would, uh, leave four approaches to this entire commercial, uh, property that should provide good access ingress and egress to the site. Uh, just some considerations, all the proposed lots meet the requirements of the motor business district. The proposal would appear to support greater development opportunity in the parcel and getting some out-pad locations on the property, which generally, uh, certainly is desirable, um, viewed as being desirable by our department. Um, with that potential increase for, uh, increased traffic, we are recommending the consolidation of those two northern approaches. Uh, they do create a bit of a, a conflict with the vehicles maybe turning in opposite directions coming out of two approaches that are twenty-five feet away from each other, um, and that would help, uh, improve safety and reduce vehicular and pedestrian conflicts on that Main Street frontage. If those two are consolidated, then it does leave four good approaches to the site, um, and staff is recommending that, uh, all the product, all the subject parcels jointly utilize those four access approaches for access and circulation. Uh, and my staff did meet with the, uh, the owner or the potential owner of the property and, and, uh, they were agreeable to, to the concept of the consolidation of access and felt that there was certainly more than enough access for the parcel. Uh, so staff's recommendations, uh, per city policy, this has been noticed as a public meeting for any comments, so everybody within six hundred feet of the property has been notified of the proposal. At a staff's recommendation, the lot division and lot line adjustment be approved with three conditions, uh, the first of which was a consolidation of those two, uh, North Main approaches prior to the issuance of a permit, uh, for any new principal structures upon the parcels. We'll get that out of order. Uh, second is the applicant to execute a shared access easement agreement allowing for those shared access and use of those four remaining approaches for all three parcels. Uh, and the third is just a minor detail of prior to separate conveyance of that northeast parcel to a different party, that the applicant either remove that existing vacant structure or modify that structure to meet building code, uh, fire separation requirements. As you can see, one of those lot lines is proposed to be, I'll just flip back here, uh, right through the middle of that building, um, and so if the buildings remain, that, that can happen, we can just, uh, put a two-hour fire separation there, and a property line can go down the middle of the building, um, but if the intent is to, uh, but one of those two things need to occur before that property can be conveyed and, and technically that new lot created, to make sure that we don't have any building code violations that may result of that. Um, so those, those were staff's, uh, recommendations, and be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
I have some.
All pretty clear to me.
Yeah, I got a few for you, Bill. Looking at the letter from ITD, they indicate that trees wouldn't be going in there, probably if we build out to the proper line, is that so?
Trees can go in there, it's, it's, the comment from ITD is the same clear zone discussion we've been having with ITD, so, uh, they would like to see trees placed no closer than twelve feet from the edge of the traveled way. Um, so that doesn't mean that there can't be trees on the property, but there may be some separation from the edge of the traveled lane on that locations.
Would that be an impediment to development of the properties and building location?
No, the property, the, the structures themselves could be located within that distance, and that actually corresponds with our setback, um, location there, so the edge of the traveled way is typically going to be twelve to eighteen inches away from the face of the curb, there's an existing four-to-five-foot walk there, and then a ten-foot setback, so that's automatically gonna place those structures outside of that clear zone distance, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, so that'd make that whole site look a whole lot better, I think.
And the owners indicated that they're interested in, in doing some landscape enhancements, some frontage improvements on the property because they recognize that, that, that is the current condition.
And also, uh, given the current situation, would this pretty much, uh, eliminate the ability of the city to realign E Street without that peculiar jog that it has that is always stirring up interesting traffic patterns right there?
Well, I don't know that the lot line adjustment is ultimately would preclude that or the lot, lot line adjustment, I mean, it's, the city could certainly approach the property owner if it had an interest or desire to try to acquire the property to allow for that realignment, um, so just the, the lot division itself doesn't preclude it. Ultimately, if it gets divided and if it gets developed in the future with a, with a building or a structure, then that's going to make it certainly more difficult to do so. Um, we did express some potential concern from the city to look at the realignment of the intersection, uh, and I think the, the applicant desires to pursue what is being proposed to you today.
Okay. Also, there was another letter present about sewer lines underneath the properties, has that been...
There are some utility lines, and I believe there is a, a storm sewer line that does cross the property, and ultimately, that'll be addressed at a future point of development. Um, so if it is, I think there is, uh, for the southeast corner, if I understand correctly, there was a, a storm sewer line that does bisect that proposed new parcel, so if it does impede the ability to develop that parcel, they'll have to look at possible relocation of that storm main at that point in time. But until there's actually a, a plan or proposal for development, um, it's difficult to address at this point.
Yeah, it says two sewer mains running through the proposed new lots, from Bob Bevel.
Not storm, but just sewer mains, doesn't it?
Sewer mains.
Yeah, I think, I think there's...
But they, they would have to consider, like he says, relocate it, just like they did for Walgreens when that went in.
Correct, correct, that's just, it's going to be the case that those are there by easement if they wish to relocate them, or if they're in the way at the time of future development, they will have to relocate those.
And only one other minor pickyoon pronouncement, and that's, uh, on the southernmost entrance onto Main Street, uh, whether they would be willing to flag that as exit only from the parking lot, because with its placement close to the traffic light, there's people cutting across to try to turn into that across the left-hand turn lane headed south, and it makes a heck of a mess at times with who's trying to get in there, so if that could be flagged as exit only, it would certainly ease any potential traffic conflicts at that point.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be exit only, it could be right-in, right-out. What you're trying to avoid is that left-hand turning movement across that, what is the turn bay for the D Street intersection. Um, that's certainly something we could talk with the applicant about and talk with ITD about. Ultimately, to really prohibit that, you would really need to have some sort of median or divider to, that would prohibit vehicles from making that turning movement.
Thing to remember is, that's already a double-yellow line, that's an illegal left-hand turn.
Oh, yeah. And stop people one whiff.
If, if you wish to really prohibit that or limit that activity, you would need to place some sort of physical divider on that center lane, so that's something, certainly we could talk with ITD and the applicant.
Yeah, it'd be something to talk about later on.
My question is, what's the crash data there, though? I mean, if, I don't, if, nothing really jumps out at me, so.
Nope, but there sure is a lot of...
There's a lot of honk and horns, maybe, but...
You, you bring that up, I don't think a sign is gonna keep, I think the only way you're gonna keep people from making a left-hand turn into there is to put up a concrete divider.
So that would...
You'd have to drive over, that will stop people from doing it.
Which wouldn't hurt my feelings at all, really. Anyway, those were, but overall, I think the whole project serves a really good purpose and would so much improve that whole site and provides more, uh, motor business space down through there, I really like that.
Okay, since I said before, this is a public meeting, and looks like Tom's got something to say already before he...
Before he even called on me. Tom Lamar, um, I'm generally very supportive of this, I think it's a good idea. I, um, had the same question that Art did about E Street and the opportunity for realignment of that, um, malfunctioning intersection, or what I think of as a malfunctioning intersection. We talked about it on council before when we were looking at the, uh, twenty-four-hour fitness project at that, around that timing. Um, it just seems like we have an opportunity, and, as you said, I suppose, this doesn't preclude that from happening, but, um, it feels like it's...
Further discussion, yeah.
Further discussion, I just would like to see some, and I, I appreciate that you also brought up the bit about the left turn in from that intersection, 'cause you, people start, you know, there are two cars in away from that intersection, and they suddenly stop to turn left, and that backs up that intersection, too, so, anyway, those are my comments.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Like I said, this public meeting, is any other members of the public come participate in city government?
Hi.
Go ahead and state your name and your address for us.
My name is Jane Pritchett, and I'm at six fifteen North Washington, about two blocks from this subject property, and I have sort of a strange concern, I think, uh, in the summer months, there are always trucks parked down here, a lot of refrigerator trucks running their engines all night, and it's very disturbing to the little piece of residential area that I'm in, and, uh, so I'm very concerned about what is gonna go in and, and how it is gonna be, uh, done, and anything about those, uh, left-hand turns you were talking about would help, 'cause there's, we hear traffic all, all throughout the day, smashing, and brakes going off, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to the discussion?
Clarity.
Clarity.
Shelley Bennett, two-two-seven-nine Moser Court.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to clarify that the E Street opportunity has been looked at, and it hasn't been well-received because it basically removes that entire development parcel. Rozar's agreement with the developer is that they won't build any closer than a hundred feet from the Main Street back, so that they won't adversely affect their parking, so I know that that's not a possibility, but for, um, and that there's actually three, and there's actually one, two, three, four entrances on Main Street, one that's cleared down on, right before you get to the corner, that one doesn't serve any purpose, the, the purpose is, is to bring the traffic in at two central locations, potentially even relocating the pylon sign to, to make it more symmetrical, and to make it so that both of those accesses have, make more sense, which also helps the development of the southeast corner, to move that one a little farther north. So I can see those potentially coming in in the future, and, um, the cars parked on the corner will be gone, so where will we park those trucks? That's the next question. Just getting the environmental assessment completed took me all day long to get all those trucks off the site, but if, that, do you have any specific questions for me because I'm working directly with the developers?
Yeah, I think that's not something at this point as far as what, what happens there, that's, that's between you and the planning department, this is just the lot line adjustment, so.
Right. Just wanted to make sure I could clarify it for the public's interest.
Yeah, I mean, it, it kinda sucks that, and I, I, I understand, you know, that you wanna use the property as you can, and, and I, I honestly don't see anything changing with E Street there, you know, with, with anything that's going on here, so, you know, we'll, it'd be, it'd be nice, but, you know, it, it all depends on what gets developed there, maybe something can happen, but, you know, it's, it's hard, hard to say what, so...
Well, people are learning that E Street is a hard street to get across and a hard street to get out on in certain times of the day, so I think the traffic is being generally motivated to go to D Street even off of Almond.
With the signal there now, yeah.
And we might put a sign on Almond Street right before you get to C that would say access, with a sign that says, to, to, to take them out to D Street.
C Street, that, that little touch of C Street that we put in there's really helped a lot, too, so...
Right. Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Kinda like we're gonna gavel 'em out. Wayne, go ahead.
That, uh, that area at five o'clock, six o'clock at night is one of the most congested areas that I could be in town. It's terrible to try to get out of that parking lot if you wanna turn north, and I've educated myself that I come out of the parking lot and I come out on D Street, and then I either go straight through, or then I make a turn on that. I would be concerned that if E Street ever did get realigned, that that would attempt to increase the traffic of people trying to utilize that intersection to get across, and right now, if you take a look at E Street, there's not a lot of, of traffic coming off of, uh, E, trying to get across and jog in there. Most people, as Shelley said, have become educated that that's not a good move, and so I think it actually controls that traffic a little bit better by not having that intersection aligned, and it forces more people to utilize the D and Main Street intersection, which is much, much safer. So, as, as far as this lot line adjustment, I'm excited about it, I think it's, uh, I think it's a great opportunity to increase the commercial development on the north end of town, which we certainly, which we certainly need, and so, uh, I absolutely support it along with the recommendations from the city.
Yep.
Head nods all the way around. Um, I don't know that this has to be even a regular agenda item, does it, a lot line adjustment?
You can consent.
We've, we've had our public meeting, so we'll go ahead, and if somebody has a concern, we'll pull it from the consent agenda, so. All right, thank you. Uh, it looks like we're getting a report from, 'cause that's our, end of our regular agenda, and this is the High Five Year-End Report, and Jordan Tracy and Jen Pifner are going to present this.
And while Jordan's setting up the PowerPoint presentation, I'll just do a quick, um, intro. Jordan joined us last May, um, after her work with a student group at the University of Idaho in the Movement Sciences class, um, there, or department, excuse me. Jordan and her team helped us research and review different potential programs that she'll speak to, um, this evening, and the one we actually came up with based on their recommendations, and then hired Jordan as our intern to oversee, so I'd also like to say a quick thank you to Jordan because her time with us is almost up. She spent the summer working on the Moscow Farmers Market and this program, and so, within a few more days, she won't be with us anymore.
That's why they're interns.
A big thanks to Jordan, a big thanks to Jordan for all she's done.
All right.
Great, well, um, like Jen said, last year in twenty thirteen, the city applied for a thirty thousand dollar grant with the Blue Cross of Idaho, um, with the High Five Children's Health Collaborative, which is powered by them, um, and the focus of the grant is obviously to combat childhood obesity, and Moscow was named an ambassador city for the program. Um, and I was involved last year with my U of I Movement Sciences Group, um, we were partnered, working with Kathleen in the Arts Department because we knew that the program would, the program would come through the farmers' market, so we, we researched the best practices and what had happened in farmers' markets, what kinds of things were happening, and, um, we developed what we thought would be a good program, which would be the passport program, and it would have four main components, um, which would be fruit and vegetable cooking classes, physical activity classes, fruit and vegetable tastings, and active commute to the market, and then the kids who participated would have a little passport that they would have to be able to track these things throughout, um, with the focus of the program being increasing physical activity and fruit and vegetable consumption. So, in May, I was hired, um, and I'm almost done. Uh, and we distributed around four hundred and fifty passports to kids in the community, um, elementary-age children, and on average, we had about thirty kids per event, so we'll look at, I mean, these are just fun pictures, but, um, our first component was the fruit and vegetable tastings, and we had five of these. Um, they were all led by dieticians from Gritman Nutrition Services, and kids, um, were able to try different fruits and vegetables, all purchased from vendors within the market. Um, some of the items they tried were Chinese cabbage, peaches, snow peas, cucumbers, sweet peppers, apples and tomatoes, um, and for every item that they tried, they received a stamp in their passport, and then, um, they had two stickers that they would put on the survey board, which you can kind of see at the bottom, and there were two main questions for every item they tried, did you like it, and would you try it again? From there, we kinda monitored results.
They liked cabbage.
Yeah. Yeah.
What was the result? One said, you know, "I didn't like it," but then about four said, "No, I'll never..."
I'll never eat it again.
So, in this component of the program, we had anywhere from 38 to 73 children participating overall. And then we had four fruit and vegetable cooking classes that happened, and they were led by a couple of different dieticians from the area. They had short lessons and activities on fruits and vegetables, and then they had hands-on sessions where kids were able to prepare their own snack, and items that they had were...in the first picture, on June 14th, we had fruit and veggie roll-ups. The second one was, let's see, fruit parfait in a cone. In August, we had berry freezer jam in honor of National Can It Forward Day, International Can It Forward Day. And then the last was a Northwest apple salad, very appropriate for the area. And in these classes, we had anywhere from 16 to 37 children participating. And then we had four activity classes that took place in the program. These were led by local individuals and organizations. So, the first class, we had Ryan Lazo, who was an AmeriCorps volunteer who just led schoolyard games for the kids, jump roping, hopscotch, all that jazz. And the second, we paired up with the dance studio on Main Street, Spectrum Two Dance Studio, and they had a movement and dance class. And then, once again, Ryan Lazo helped us on August 23rd, and we had some frisbee games and some relay races, some more jump roping. And then on the 20th, which was National Gymnastics Day, we had Palouse Empire Gymnastics, who had an obstacle course and gymnastic lessons for the kids, and anywhere from seven to 53 children participated in these activities. So, throughout the program, we had prizes that were offered, just little incentives for kids to keep coming, and at the end, the incentive for the kids was to turn in their passports so they could march with the farmer's market and the U of I Homecoming Parade. So, on October 11th, they could turn in their passports, which was their ticket to go. And we had some post-program evaluations for the parents fill out as well as the kids, and we sent out 1,010 to the schools just last week to get some good data and feedback for next year. We also had kids who turned in their passports entered into a grand prize drawing where they could win a season swim pass to the Aquatic Center here in town or an IBITS kid pedometer, and so we've been collecting data ever since, and will continue doing so. There's another U of I group who's going to be working on the program this coming year, and they'll be looking to make changes and improvements for next year's program. So, if you have any questions...
Yeah, our grant was a two-year funding cycle, and this was the first of two years, so we've got another year to build on what Jordan and her team started in the beginning and go from there, so...
Good deal. Thank you for all your work.
Yes.
Good luck in whatever you're doing next.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea.
Absolutely.
It's a great program.
And you look at all those kids down there making roll-ups and tasting cabbages that they'll never eat again.
Yeah.
Great.
Just one other note, with Veterans Day tomorrow, city facilities will be closed, so for those folks out there that are looking to access city facilities, we'll see you again on Wednesday morning.
Sounds good. Anything else for the good of the order, fellas?
Not I.
And we're adjourned then. Thank you.